Good morning, thank, good evening. Thank you for joining us for the School District of the City of Dearborn Regular Board Meeting, Monday, October 9th. It is 7:04 PM and I would ask for, as we start the meeting, a roll call.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Dambrosho. Trustee McDonald. Trustee Mosip.
Here.
Trustee Petchikoff.
Here.
Trustee Watts here, President Thorpe.
Here. Next item?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mazainab Diva, Principal of Lindbergh Elementary, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, President Thorpe, distinguished board members, and Dr. Maleko. I want to introduce some of our student lighthouse leaders. I have with me Emily Miller, Zachary Ball, Isabel Habhab, and Nora Hetrick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nora, thank you very much. Emily, thank you. Zachary, thank you very much.
Zachary.
Isabel, thanks for your help. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update, agenda items, retirements.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well and good start to the fall season. We're well over a month into the school year, hard to believe. So, we're going to start with agenda items. I have one retirement this month. Dennis Dix, over 25 years of service. I want to thank you and wishing him all the best if we could show our appreciation. Also, I know later in the agenda, we are going to have our new teachers come up and it was a great reception we just came from at 6:15 and we did get that photo with the vision sign, so I want to thank Ms. Turfy, Ms. Farage, and all those teachers, the new hires who are here this evening, and we're excited to see you a little later in the agenda. Want to mention that we have one of our wonderful events that we hold every year, oh, excuse me, Principal Appreciation Month first. I want to acknowledge all of our administrators in the district for the hard work that they do, the great work, supporting our students, working with our entire staff. If we could show our appreciation right now, I want to send a message. And on Thursday, we have a very exciting event going on called the Care to the Core. It is an all-day event throughout the district. It starts here, the kickoff, at 9:00 AM at the Central Office Building. There'll be events going on all over the district. We've had it now for several years. I know Mr. Asalee has taken the lead with several other staff. We focus on things like bullying prevention and, you know, positive healthy lifestyles, support for emotional well-being, and just creating a positive school environment. So, there's a lot of wonderful things. We have community members out there, and I know last year, we were even highlighted on the news, so it's a real positive area that students also take leadership. So, hopefully, we'll see some of you on Thursday in some of the buildings for the events. And I did, Mr. Asalee is going to send to the board the schedule of where the bus will be going throughout the day. As we are mentioning that, I do want to mention, since we're talking about support for emotional well-being and supporting our students, given the conflict in the Middle East, we do have available additional supports for students in the schools. And I've spoken to Mr. Asalee, who will have our team in action to support our students, so they just have to reach out to administration, a social worker counselor, or a teacher as needed. And the last thing I have is, we had a wonderful event just over a week ago, the Education Foundation Event, and I know they raised a lot of money for the students and several of us were there, but I want to thank the foundation for the work they do, Ms. Townsend, the entire board, and everyone who contributed to that event. It went back to the TPC, and again, a lot of money did get raised to support our students in the classroom. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Any questions for the superintendent on the update items? Thank you, next.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Good evening. I have two of my wonderful magnet students here. Let them introduce themselves, they have the commendations.
Hi, I'm Abdullah Abdulkrim.
Good evening, my name is Fatima Jaber.
And today, we will be reviewing the commendations. Commendations to Tom Wall, who renewed his Chief Financial Officer Certification through the Michigan Business Officials, School Business Officials. The certification will last for five years as long as Mr. Wall continues to meet the required ongoing professional development hours. Tom Wall is the district's Executive Director of Business Service and Operations. Commendations to Jean Brackett in Media Services. Ms. Brackett came to ASC on the day the power was out in August and the building was mostly closed, and spent a few hours working to get Superintendent Maleko's district phone functioning again, so he could access important communications. Also commendations to Myla Harp and the Assessment Department for supporting the Dearborn Public Schools' virtual K-12 staff and students during in-person eye-ready testing. An additional thank you to SFE and Food Service Director Jeff Murphy for providing breakfast and lunch.
And for the high school commendations, commendations to Cassiana Anderson, the high school senior, has qualified as a semifinalist for 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. More than 1.3 billion juniors across the country entered the competition by taking the PSAT last fall. The nationwide pool for more than 16,000 semifinalists represents less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors. On a related note, commendations to Fortson High School Senior Hassan H. Kassem and Dearborn High School Senior Eric Getteman, who are both recognized as commended students for 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. Based on his test scores last fall, about 13,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promises. And for the elementary commendations, commendations to Nolan, Principal Josh Tyen, Nolan Teacher Leah Casadoz, and High Principal Erin McGevno. For their efforts to go above and beyond to accedominate the needs for students, their actions affirmed their commitment to work with parent for the best interests of students. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's donations are from different donors, but mainly Dearborn Education Foundation, as usual. I will refer to Dearborn Education Foundation as DEF. A donation of $905 has been offered to William Ford Elementary by DEF to be used for hands and phonics learning materials. A donation of $50,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by DEF in partnership with Cleveland Cliffs to be used at Salina for the green schoolyards. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by DEF in partnership with Levy to be used for Salina Green Schoolyards. A donation of 35 hardcover books has been offered to Fortson High School by Defining Moments and Peter Raffner to be added to the nonfiction collection in the library. A donation of 35 hardcover books has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Defining Moments and Peter Raffner to be added to the nonfiction collection in the library. A donation of 35 hardcover books has been offered to Dearborn High School by Defining Moments and Peter Raffner to be added to the nonfiction collection in the library. A donation of $500 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Home Depot to be used for a retaining wall and flowers to be planted around the marquee. A donation of a 2014 Ford Fiesta has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Village Ford to be used for training and educational purposes in the auto shop. A donation of a medical grade medical reclining chair has been offered to Salina Intermediate to be used for students when injured and being seen in the school nurse's office. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Staff Recognition, Human Resources and Student Services staff.
Good evening. I have Director of Human Resources, Nada Elamedine, here, and I have Director of Human Resources Instructional Courtney Platsky. Director of Student Services, Mr. Abe Masur, has been under the weather, so he is not able to be here today. He did contribute his words in this as well, but before I read anything or share anything, I'd like the staff to introduce themselves. We're going to start with Sarah.
So, my name is Sarah Cornet. I'm the HR Office Manager, and I've been with the district about a year and a half.
My name is Sarah Durham. I've been working in the district for two years.
My name is Abir Alaridi. I've been working in Student Services for about two years.
My name's Nicole Beckham. I'm the HR Technician. I've been with the district almost two years.
My name is Hala DeKruv. I'm an HR General, and I've been with the district for 27 years.
Hello, my name is Mari Kassada. I'm the HR Special Projects Manager, and I have been with the district for two and a half years.
So, just a few words about our staff. We do have a few others that were not able to be here tonight from Student Services as well. Dealing with difficult situations that are typically emotionally charged because they involve humans and students is never an easy task. To our staff, your professionalism, compassion, expertise, persistence, and stamina is beyond admirable.
Ms. Ali Bazi?
Yes.
Can you slow down a little bit for our translation?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Oh, Manara is supposed to be up here. Manara is with Student Services. Thank you, Manara. I will slow down.
She's busy working.
We continue to grow together as a team through our collaboration and nonstop problem-solving as each of you are tasked with a new problem to troubleshoot, a process to develop, assess, or recommend changes to. You have all embraced cross-training and do your absolute best to provide the highest level of customer service, contributing to a positive workplace environment. You are willing to jump in at any given moment to go above and beyond to help employees, parents, students, and the community. You have created an environment where stakeholders feel valued and respected, and for that, you have my utmost gratitude. Thank you. Thank you for always being willing to take on new challenges and responsibilities. Your attention to detail and organizational skills are impressive, to say the least. Your ability to keep track of the countless details and tasks required to keep our organization running smoothly is a testament to your expertise and dedication to your work. You are not afraid to step outside of your comfort zone. I am thankful for each and every one of you, and I speak on behalf of Director Abe Masur as well. We are thankful for each and every one of you, and you truly make coming to work each day brighter and more promising. Thank you. I'm going to take a picture over here.
If any trustees want to be involved with a photo, please join. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, Building and Site Committee meeting, September 11th, 2023, Board Report 23-41, Regular P-12 Meeting, September 11th, 2023, Board Report 23-42, Policy Committee Meeting, September 29th, 2023, Board Report 23-43, Special Meeting, Expulsion Closed, October 2nd, 2023, Board Report 23-44, and Special Meeting, Expulsion Closed, October 2nd, 2023, Board Report 23-45. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Motion was by trustee Barry, was it trustee Mosip that I heard that supported?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any corrections that the trustees saw that needed to be added to it, or, all right, seeing none, can I attach unanimous roll?
Sure.
All right, so moved. Next item?
Next item, special reports, new professional staff recognition, Ms. Turfy and Ms. Farage.
Good evening, again. I'd like to, Ms. Turfy, to introduce herself before we begin.
Good evening, my name is Fay Turfy. I'm the Consultant for Dearborn Teacher University.
Okay, so, we're going to go over what DTU is briefly to remind our audience and our board's president and trustees, and then we'll recognize the new teachers, newly hired professional staff, is what we like to refer to them. So, Dearborn Teacher University was established in 2016. It is also under one of the focus areas of our current strategic plan. The purpose of Dearborn Teacher University is to support the newly hired professional staff in meeting the state requirement and also gain professional development that would align with the district initiatives. In other words, to make their life easier and to have one entity where they would refer to for any questions that they may have about their certifications, their professional development, and the requirements. When they first enter Dearborn Public Schools, whether they are newly hired professional staff or brand-new from college, they are assigned mentors, and the mentors that they assigned are typically teachers on their teams that they teach the same subject or the same grade level as much as possible. We try to pair them up with staff that could support them the most, and they meet on a monthly basis, multiple times a month, and through DTU, this gets monitored and the support is given by the consultant. We like to include the numbers of Year 1, Year 2, and Year 3 teachers, and they continue to receive support throughout the three years, mentorship throughout the three years. The numbers that we have here, we have 143 newly hired professional staff this year. We have 100 who have been for two years and 58 for three years, so we have 301 in total that are receiving support through DTU. Agenda topics are really tailored to their needs. We do not offer everyone one-size-fits-all professional development. We base it on their years of experience. They select from a menu that would best meet their needs, and we base the topics as well on their feedback, and it continues to change every year. So, they do not have to come every month to the professional development. They select the ones that would best fit their needs. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Turfy, who's doing an amazing job at DTU. This is her second year, and really, she picked up, and she's been very innovative in the program.
Thank you. Good evening, President Thorpe, Superintendent Dr. Maleko, School Board Trustees. My name is Fay Turfy, and I serve as a Dearborn Teacher University Consultant. I'm delighted to extend a warm and heartfelt welcome to the newest staff members of our educational family. I'm proud to announce that with the steadfast support and leadership of Mrs. Fatmi Farage, we have welcomed over 100 new staff members to Dearborn Public Schools this year. It is with great enthusiasm that we welcome our teachers and support staff to our district. This evening, we have with us our newly hired professional staff, and I would like to recognize them. If they can all please stand. At this time, if you would like to introduce yourself, your position, your building location, please come forward. Don't all jump up at once.
Good evening, my name is Fatima Baydoun. I'm currently a first-grade teacher at Miller Elementary School. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate Dearborn Teacher University and all the support that they have to offer as a first-year teacher. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize Ms. Fatmi Farage, as she was my first-grade teacher, and I'm currently a first-grade teacher, so thank you, Fatmi.
Hello, my name is Kira Freibert, and this is obviously my first year teaching Dearborn Public Schools. I grew up in Dearborn, I went to Howard, to Bryant, graduated from Dearborn High School, moved away for 10 years, and now I'm back, and I'm very happy to be teaching in this district. I teach vocal music in elementary, K through 5, and it's been a delight so far, and I look forward to many more years. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Paché, graduate of Etzel Ford, 1995, and now I teach at the enemy Dearborn High School. I teach Wood Tech 1 through 4 and Geometry and Construction as of new this year.
Thank you for your service.
Good evening, everyone. Aulay Reishuni, world language teacher at Dearborn High, and I'm so excited to be part of the Dearborn Public School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nawal Halani. I'm a 4th-grade teacher at Miller Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tarek Verbley, the auto instructor at Fortson High School, and this is my Year 1. Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Destiny Sands. I teach at Maples Elementary, 1st grade.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Autumn Stinson, and this is my first year as an ASD coach with Dearborn Public Schools. I'm coming from Detroit Public Schools, and I had given them 25 years of service, so I'm very happy to be here. Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rahida Alcibai. That's my first year teaching at Dearborn Public School. I have a different background. I have a bachelor in chemistry, but now I went into teaching. I used to work in a lab, and I'm so happy to be part of Dearborn Public Schools. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening, my name is Salima Darwish. I'm a 4th-grade teacher at Snow. I was a teacher for eight years at a different district and just moved to Dearborn Schools. I'm proud to be a part of Dearborn Schools, by the way. I want to, I'm also very grateful for all the support I received from all the staff and the different departments in the district, especially my principal and the Dearborn Teaching University. Thank you.
Thank you for all the new staff for joining us. We hope you find a career with Dearborn Schools to be very fulfilling. Next item?
Next item, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who are assigned in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Board Secretary, may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Their forespeakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There's a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. The first person, Nofila Hyder, a parent and community member from Dearborn, would like to come to speak to the board about special ed PTA.
Good evening. For the first time in a long time, Dearborn Schools will have a special education PTA. This unit has been long awaited by parents and teachers, and is very special in more ways than one. First, we'd like to begin by thanking our first two members, Dr. Maleko and trustee Barry. The other trustees, we're waiting. The support of the board and the administration means a lot to us. This PTA unit will be run by the inaugural board. Only three of us were able to make it tonight, but I can list our names. Myself as president, Angela Chatter as vice president, Ms. Johanna Bezi as vice president too, Laura Fish as treasurer, and Rebecca Mikowski as secretary. We will be, we'll have our, we have our first 25 members, and we'll be appointing membership chairs soon, and other chair, board chairs soon. This unit was formed to build a bridge between the administration and the parents, and Mr. Asalee, the Director of Special Education Department, has been very supportive, and we thank him for that. And as you all know, special education classes are housed across the district, so this unit is open to members from parents across the entire city and the community at large, and everyone's support is needed and appreciated. So, please reach out to us, join us, help our students, and help us help our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, parent, Ahmed Baydoun from Dearborn, would like to come to speak to the board about school violence.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Ahmed Baydoun. I'm a dentist. I've been serving Dearborn community for the past 30 years. I'm here, standing in front of you, to address a very important concern of most of our community parents, which is the school violence. I have a son, he's my only son, he's a 9th grader at Dearborn High School. Ms. Jibril, the principal, she did such a wonderful, awesome job controlling whatever event has been taking place at her school with the help of the Dearborn Police and the security officers that are there with the school. I'm here to definitely praise her for all the excellent work that she has done, including all her staff, but also, I'm here to address one single concern. Why we, as a parents, sign a contract making sure that we take care of our children and making sure that they are going to school to study, to further their education, and to nourish their well-being, and the school, on the other hand, handles their education and makes sure that they are doing everything that they can? And if anyone who is not capable of controlling their children, I think they should be basically expelled from the school district. I understand that we have some policies and we have some rules and sets of rules that we have where if anybody commits any kind of altercation, any kind of problems at school, that you have certain rules and regulations that you have, you put forth, but why don't we really have some kind of contract where the parents are responsible for their kids and the teachers and the administration, they're responsible for making sure- and the teachers and the administration, they're responsible for making sure that the kids and the students are being well taken care of? Why do I have to worry about if my son is going to go to school and there is someone who's holding gun in the school vicinity and worried that some kind of shooting might take place or things of that sort? I'm sure whatever the Dearborn Police, the security that you are having, they're doing their job. But I think the board should really address this issue more on community, family and school. And anybody who does not really comply, they should just simply expelled from the school. The school's supposed to be a place to, for education, for nourishment, for expanding the horizon of the student. Not the parents should be, sorry, I have five more seconds. But not the parents should be worried about what's going to happen next? If my son going to come back home or not?
Thank you very much. Let's just wait until we get through the comments.
Next, community member Kathy Martin would like to come to speak to the board about teacher voices.
Good evening, it's me again, DFT president. I would just like to share with you some issues that are our special area teachers are dealing with right now. Music has, the music teachers have tended to be the most vocal, but our art teachers, our STEM teachers, our media teachers are really struggling to feel like they're doing their jobs to the best of their abilities when it's coming to the schedules that are happening. And I've been hearing a lot of, you know, talk that these aren't core classes. We need to remember that for some students, music is the reason they come to school. For others, it's art. And there's been plenty of research that shows students who excel at music, excel in their academic areas. Students who excel at art help excel in reading and other areas. So I really want the district to take a look at the special areas and a lot of them have been working with us to help come up with a good schedule where students can have the specials that have been guaranteed to them. As of right now, fifth grade is not getting any instrumental music and it's been put on hold indefinitely, which is very frustrating to the teachers who have been hired to teach these subjects. And I'm up here because I am the voice of the 1,400 teachers in this district. And I do need to address something that took place in August. We were here, a lot of teachers are comfortable coming, they're comfortable sharing their thoughts, but some of them are not comfortable getting up and speaking. And for the first time, the school board refused to read what the teachers had provided. And they really felt like you all had no desire to hear what they were saying. So this last month, I reached out to the school board asking that the DFT, I, be placed on the agenda to be able to get up and express the thoughts of the teachers without a time limit. And I was refused that as well. So if you all really want to hear from the teachers, I hope that you figure out a way to hear from us without giving us a three-minute timeframe.
Thank you very much.
Next, community member Jackson Wagner from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about IDEA and IEPs.
All right, today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. The best thing about America is that it aspires to be a land of liberty and justice with our Bill of Rights and our March to Progress. In many ways, the US is a much freer country than it was at its birth, even if progress is not always linear. But the most shameful thing is just how short of her promises America often falls. Liberty and justice for all, you have the students say. But where is the liberty and justice for students? This is the school district where trustees of the board sometimes pontificate about parental rights with no sense of self-awareness or irony, sitting right behind the very banner that says students first. Ever since I was 12 years old, I openly lamented how few civil rights I had. Not just because being unfree on its own pained me, but because being unfree kept me trapped in an unsafe home where I was abused. It kept me trapped in conditions where my educational needs as a profoundly gifted student with ADHD weren't met, where my emotional and social needs were neglected, where I hated being alive. There are so many deeply painful personal stories I wish I could tell you about how much the callous disregard for the perspectives, the rights, and even the very humanity of adolescents has caused me untold misery for years. But I already know that most of you don't care. You don't care about the rights or the well-being of students. You've made that clear enough. They're just chess pieces in your cynical game to stay in office and placate loud and angry voices. But I know that you care about your public image and I know you care about falling afoul of state and federal law. I need not remind you of the myriad consequences that willfully breaking state and federal law could result in. Remember last October's meetings? When your cowardice overrode any integrity you imagined yourselves to have? It's been that long since you dropped the district's use of Sora. When you were intimidated into banning books and throwing LGBT students onto the bus, you didn't just run afoul of the Supreme Court precedent in Pico v. Board of Education by violating the First Amendment rights of high school students. By cutting Sora and its trove of audiobooks with it, you also made it impossible for a significant number of individualized education plans for disabled students who require the use of audiobooks to be followed. This isn't just un-American or Orwellian. This is in direct violation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, a federal law. It's long past time that this board started actually putting students first for once.
Thank you very much.
Next, community member Kathleen McCormick would like to, from Dearborn, would like to come to speak to the board about special area classes.
Thank you. I'm Kathleen McCormick. I teach at Henry Ford Elementary and appreciate your time to listen to the concerns that I have. I was so excited this year that we had a new contract and that I was going to be getting PLC time for the first time. And also, we were supposed to be getting more PD. I'm a STEAM teacher, so we kind of are treated differently than other teachers. The same as some of the special area classes that Kathy Martin was talking about. So I was very disheartened when we came to our first PD and we were told that we did not get to meet with our team, like the other special area classes, but that we needed to meet and go to a PD on I-ready. I mean, Eureka Math was the first one, sorry. Now, we asked why we needed to do that because we were not teaching Eureka Math. Hilda Orani, Ross Grover and Kelly Sazak all tried to support us and go up the chain of command. And they were told that, no, we had to go to Eureka Math, even though we already have math embedded in our curriculum. The rest of the PDs this year, it has been the same. We were told that we needed to go to I-ready training and after we went to it, it surprisingly, they came back and said, well, we don't administer I-ready, so we'll just be looking at trends from the Curriculum Assessment Department, which is exactly what we had told them before, that we wanted to meet as a team so that we could develop our own curriculum and common assessments and improve our current curriculum. Another area of concern with, is PLC. I was so, so excited to have PLC. We're told for our PLC, everybody else gets to meet. We do not because we have to sit in with the staff and learn about their protocols and how they will be participating. That is not helpful to me because I will not be PLCing with them later in the year and that's not helpful to our team. So everything from the beginning of year, we have not had PLC that not only meets our needs, but more importantly, helps us address the needs of our students. And that is what should be put first. And we've been very polite about this and professional. And many of us have, are very discouraged and we don't know who the higher-ups who are shooting this down because we know that Ross, Kelly, Hilda and also Bob Harrison are fighting for us. So we are very appreciative of their hard work. Now I'm going to go off STEAM and talk about some of my fellow special area teachers who are also facing some obstacles. At the beginning of this year, we got a great contract, which was going to give us five specials. And...
Thank you very much.
Next, parent Stephanie Butler from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about STEM school.
There should actually be three cards together with that.
After you do your three minutes, we'll have each person just introduce themselves.
Okay, so I am here to address incidents of reoccurring harassment, bullying at the STEM school. This has been going on for several years, but I'm just going to focus and highlight the most recent issue. So apparently, how I understand it from the child statement, which I'm reading from, the teacher often leaves the class to maybe go print things or something and leaves the students by themselves to finish a paper, okay? So meanwhile, there's a, there's a common bully on the loose in that school. There's been many issues pages before I even got to this main incident of all the things that have been done to this young lady. And the most recent incident, the teacher leaves, goes next door, remember this is STEM. I'm going to use the term John for the bully and I'm going to use the term Jane for the victim. I clearly heard John told his classmates on table that Jane will rape you loudly. That an entire classroom heard it, got shocked and went silent. After that, okay, mom comes in, child has allergies. She's been taking food to the school every day, every day for three and a half years, every day. This particular day, she goes in, her child is sitting at the lunch table by herself. She proceeds over to her student, Jane, what's, what's the matter? What's going on? Mom, this bully said this to me in front of the whole class, will rape you. Just picture that, okay? So obviously, the student's upset, rightfully so, the mother is upset. She demands that somebody listens to her, tells her what is going on. She is so nervous, she doesn't know what to do. She goes and repoles her child out of class half an hour after the incident. Lunch has ended, child's going back to class. Mom is still trying to process what's going on, goes back in, takes her daughter out, gets a statement from her. Meanwhile, meanwhile, she gets called a hovering, hovering, I don't even know what hovering. Not trespassing, there's a distinct difference between hovering and trespassing, okay? So this was brought to the principal's attention that very day, even before child went back to school, she told the principal, please, can we step inside this room? I don't want to say these bad words out loud. I don't want anyone else to hear it, okay? So he takes it nothing serious, mom goes, records the daughter. I don't know, do you want to introduce yourself?
Kazala, go free.
So mom...
Actually, we can't have the same person speak the whole time. If you want to take over the microphone then?
No, 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 I'm reading the statement. This is their, this is freedom of speech, they gave me their time, we put it on the cards, everybody knew this.
No, it said each, each speaker gets three minutes, not all the minutes.
But I'm speaking for them. It's, it's really, it's, yeah.
Why, why are you not able to speak for yourself?
Maybe she doesn't feel comfortable.
Is that the case?
Ask her.
Yes, that's why I want her to speak for me.
There you go, thank you. So anyways, the assistant principal and the principal walk in towards lunchroom, waited for him to get close, mom wanted to share the incident with them. So you'd expect them to take that seriously. So bully John gets up from the lunch table, and mind you, I'm going back and forth with this statement. Gets up from his lunch table seat, after he does this in class, now we're in the lunchroom, and says out loud in front of the whole student body again, Jane cannot prove that I said that, even though the whole class had heard him say that, okay? So anyways, mom goes to class, teacher gives permission and allowed daughter Jane to step outside the classroom to see my parents and they hugged me, embraced me, to console me on this most difficult day of my entire life. They asked if I was okay and that if she needs to come home today and I shared that I would like to stay and finish school today, she wanted to be brave. She's been going through this for two years with this bully. Somebody needs to stand up. So she shares the details with her mom, her mom records it, that is her right and that's her business to do. She's the parent. So instead of addressing that, okay, so then principal comes to mom and tells her, you have one option. It's going to be restorative circle, meaning I'm going to put you in a circle with your aggressor who has told the whole class that the class will rape her and we're supposed to solve what? By revictimizing the victim and putting her in a circle? And that was her only option given. When mom declined that option or did not give a appropriate response, the next day, mom and dad went together to drop their child off at school. They walked up to the principal and they said, we would like to discuss this incident with you. We would like to get somewhere with this. Principal told them, I would love to discuss it with you too and we do need to have a conversation, but it will not happen without police present. Is, is mom a criminal for hovering to try to make sure her child is okay after this incident just happened? Mind you, remember, we don't use the word trespassing. It's hovering or lingering, okay? So anyways, parents leave, where they go home and they're given an email. Basically, do you have the email? Oh, it's in here. The email basically affirms both of these parents and says, you both are now banned from school property, banned. You cannot come on the property. I don't care about your child's allergy, figure it out, figure out a way to get her her food every day. Mind you, mom is an elected treasurer of the PTA. We won't even go in the past and talk about the incidents that she had at Lindbergh, which caused her to remove one of her children from this district. I'm, I mean, it's just, it literally in the email threatens her and says that you lingered around the school. Therefore, you are banned from the premises. Can you even imagine? Her daughter just gets told she's going to get raped in front of the whole class. Obviously, the parents are upset, they don't know what to do. She's been bullied before in the school system. She seeks out, the principal tries to handle it, does the right thing, doesn't scream. She doesn't try to confront the bully. She doesn't, she goes through the proper step of trying to address it right there on the spot. The very next day, she gets banned from the school. What the hell are we doing here? What are we doing here? Stop saying students first. It's obviously not students first. It's let's protect the bullies, let's protect the administration and any parent who speaks out against it, you stay off school property. Then, in the morning, when both parents went, he's in, principal's in mom's face yelling at her, pointing his finger like this down on her, in her face, as her husband stands there. What are we going to do about this? This needs to be investigated by MSP outside this district. I think those administrators in that building who banned the parents for sticking up for their daughter, which is their right and more importantly, their duty. They need to be put on administrative leave until somebody gets a handle on this situation with this bully. This is against the law and it's against Elliot Larson and you guys know it. You cannot say you're going to rape someone, that's sexual harassment and it violates Title VII and it violates Title IX. We owe them something. These parents can't even walk on the school property and then get, get this, it gets even better. Why is the school resource officer from Fortson showing up at the parent's house unannounced, knocking on the door and leaving cards when mom doesn't answer the door? Why is he there? Who sent him to? him to bully the parents? We want answers. We want answers on this. If we don't get a solution, there will be civil rights filed against this school. And boy, there's plenty of evidence, okay, including the daughter's own statement. She's been through this for years, you guys. The same boy, he gets to walk around and say, you know, "F you calls the girls B-words." Nothing ever happens to him. Why? Why? And then apparently, the school doesn't even communicate with each other, because when they switch classes, there's one teacher, the teacher didn't know any better, put bully beside the student that he just said the class is gonna rape. So there's a breakdown of something here, and I don't know what it is, but we cannot allow this. We cannot allow this to happen. We want action. We want somebody to say something tonight. It has to be addressed. That's it.
Thank you.